So here we go.
I have two questions regarding Massbeth Shelter specifically. And the first one is, were the homeless men moved in due to an emergency declaration?
Yes.
The second one is, is there a contract with any city agency currently to house them at this hotel?
No. That was easy.
This is on the turn. Part of the depression, the condition for shelter that you had found in the July 4th fight, who is putting a bill to repair those shelters? Because as you know, most of them are owned by private mailers and have sheltered nonprofit providers. Who is putting the bill to that? Are we the taxpayers putting the bill to that? And one of those people can be called the landlord.
So look, it's a combination. So there's a lot of very worthwhile social service agencies who run very good homeless shelters. Make no mistake. You know, I don't go have press conferences, but I go and visit the shelters. I've been in some beautiful shelters, visiting parents with their children and their immaculate and their security, and the shelters are being run very well. And I want to support those shelters. I've also been in shelters that if you gave me a choice between spending a night at the shelter or spending a night at Rikers, and by the way, I say that voluntarily, I would say take me to Rikers because the conditions are terrible. So there's a lot of philanthropy involved with some of the organizations. A lot of people donate money to help poor people. That is something very important. We all do that in our own way, and if we don't, we shouldn't. And then the city pays a lot as it relates to homelessness and social services. So in our last budget presentation, the assumption was that we were paying 1.7 billion dollars a year in terms of that money. We're actually paying 1.9 billion over five agencies. So part of what I want to see happen is to start thinking about, are we using this money in the most efficient way? I am troubled that the conditions within some of these shelters we've identified are so horrific and so deplorable. It's why we did the investigation in the first place. And the security is so lax. When you look at the cluster sites, they're just as bad. I mean, we found if I showed you pictures tonight about the conditions, your heart would go out. If you were at all human, you would feel that way. So part of it is our tax dollars because we do, first of all, we're required by law to help people find shelter, and it's also the right thing to do. We do pay a social service budget. We do have to have more transparency. Clearly, what we found yesterday was the whole daycare system in shelters is so different from the daycare centers everywhere else. Everywhere else, there were permits, there's inspections, there's a whole host of things you have to do to make sure a child is safe. But in a homeless shelter, kids can run around and have no sprinklers if there's a fire, no means of ingress, and the list goes on and on. So yes, the answer, short answer is we are paying, but we should get a better bang for our buck, and I do believe that.
What about the non-profit organization that paid care of people who are homeless, disadvantaged, and poor people to be used for hundreds of years? And that's what they're voting their life to. Well, why don't you talk to these experts rather than talking to an individual who owns a hotel who's only interested in his own benefit? The second thing is, instead of using the taxpayer's dollars to finance these homeless shelters, why don't you go to Wall Street and raise triple tax exempt bond fund called the homeless shelter? And people here, including myself, would buy those bonds in denomination of 25, 50, $100,000, and I don't pay any city, state, and federal taxes. Why don't you use that amount to fund a homeless shelter instead of the taxpayer's money?
You seem a little liberal to me. We're going, we're always going to use some of our taxpayer dollars to help social service issues in the city. It's not just homeless people, but we provide in the city a lot of resource for people who struggle, middle-class people, people with kids, people with kids who have disabilities. We help people who have rough patches, and that is part of what the city budget is about. Now, what you are also talking about, and I think your Wall Street reference is interesting, I promise I'll get back to you, I'll talk to our economist, but part of what we have to think about is new means of financing. Philanthropy is very powerful, but look, there is a whole national movement or discussion about social impact bonds, and that actually does relate to Wall Street and seeing if you can get a solution. So you're actually not far off about that. This is a financing scheme for good purpose that involves the financial community, and I've worked both as a borough president and now, thinking about that, that's a national discussion, but you're not far off about that.
Thanks for meeting tonight, Controller. As the person who oversees the finances, we have people checking into Massbeth, which I assume is on the voucher system. We have Jamaica, two shelters going on third. There are 60,000 people in the homeless shelter system right now, possibly going up to 70,000. How do we keep track? First of all, are there contracts? Christina asked already, are there contracts? Maybe not just with Massbeth, but with all the shelter systems. Mayor de Blasio have a contract system out. How do we oversee that contract system? And how do we know that our taxpayer money is being used efficiently and not wasteful?
Well, that's my job. Well, let me ask you a question. Part of what we do is when a contract, whether it's for a homeless shelter or any other type of facility that requires a contract, the Controller's office looks at that contract. So for example, the one thing that we have focused on is when a contract comes from a provider, we make sure that, one, the financial applications are in order. We then look at building violations, fire violations, and we look to see if that contract, the proper supportive documentation has been submitted. That is what the charter requires me to do. When that paperwork, and I don't mean it's ministerial paperwork, when we don't have a list of violations and the proper financing, as you know, as you read about the newspaper, I kick it back and say, do it again, and do it again, until we are assured that all of that is in order. Maybe it's because I grew up in Washington Heights, which is right near the Bronx, and I remember the Happy Land fire. And I know there's a lot of kids and people in conditions that aren't great, and I want to make sure that on my watch, I do everything I can to meet my responsibility, that nobody will be hurt, and that's the review that we do. I also do audits and investigations. So one of the things I do as your representative to watch your tax dollars is we went in and audited the shelter system. We spent over a year going to a sampling of shelters. You know what I found, remember? And we exposed it after we painted this very accurate, dire picture of what was going on within the shelter system. We then had the mayor and all the agencies go right in and started to look at the violations and all the issues we raised, and they started to finally make the repairs that should have been made all along. I'm still following them. Governor Cuomo and the state has also been involved after our audit, and we're working with state officials as well. I will take some credit here. We did put a marker down, and we said, we're going to start to look at the repair issues within the shelter. And I think you do it for two reasons. You do it, one, because you do want to protect the kids and the people within the shelters, the families, and you also want to assure the community that the facility is safe, and that's legitimate. And when I was borough president and a facility of any kind would come to our neighborhood or our borough, I asked the same questions you asked. Is it safe? Is it security? Do we have people who work with children who actually went through a background check? Criminal background check? You know, one of the things we exposed, and I think the mayor should get on this today, we have people working with kids in the shelter system that have never had a background check, a criminal background check, and they're working with zero to three in this day and age. That has to change because every child is special, and that's what we have to do, and you should demand it, and you should be angry about that.
How do we know? We know that Mayor de Blasio is a paper play guy. How do we know that those contracts aren't being given out in exchange for money for political favors?
Many of those issues are presently under investigation.
Good evening, Controller, Mr. Controller.
Sir.
Rodney Reed here in massive support of Massbeth with Coalition of Concerned Citizens from South Jamaica. You already know, Mr. Controller, that South Jamaica, which has been inundated with at least eight to 10 shelters of various sizes, all from out the community, inundated around the community. It's more like helping, but I'm being modest. If you are the fiscal oversight entity for the city, and this is a two-part question, how is it possible that we can pay $5,000 per room for someone that is homeless and can pay $1,000, $2,000 a month for the person to be housed? It just doesn't make fiscal sense. This is a very serious issue. After paying those monies, where is the impact study that our communities can see as it relates to the additional teachers that are required, the additional sanitation that are required?
$1,000, $4,000, $7,000 to these cluster sites that provide zero services, and they're basically slum lords who are bilking the taxpayers and the system. I do not believe that we should have a 224% increase of kids zero to three in those hotels. And that, and that has to stop. Now, let's get specific in what's wrong and identify some of the solutions. We do have to go back to community-based planning, and we do have to have a transparent process. If we're spending 1.9 billion dollars on services, then we have to see if we're being successful, and there's no shame. I'm saying that we have to see that process. I want to see a different system in place, a different way to measure whether we're having an impact. The truth is, the administration was very slow to recognize that we were having a homeless crisis. When we pointed out the repair process, they were slow and they went in. So I don't disagree with anything you say.
But how do we get there? How do we get there from the Controller's office with a direct relationship to the administration? How do we get to that point where we say, listen, and the fact that we have no real legislation that's actually coming down the pipe that addresses homeless services not giving out these contracts? But at the end of the day, from your perspective, Mr. Controller, you control the dollar. How do you stifle the administration?
Okay, but you were doing good, but now, let me put some back there. Let me get you to what's really going on. I don't control the dollars. Okay, mayors control the dollars, city council exposes expenses, I watch the money. So it's not that I can take money. Look what happened just two weeks ago. We're about to have the anniversary of Sandy, right? And now we find that we moved, the city administration moved 500 million dollars in the middle of the night because there was a cost overrun, 400 million dollars with Sandy. So it's not as clear-cut. We do not have a pipeline to City Hall, obviously. What we have is the power of audit investigation, the power to subpoena, and I have used that to the best of my ability. And we are here tonight, or I'm here tonight, to tell you that I do want to continue this conversation, but I'm also here to tell you that we do have a crisis that is not going to go away anytime soon. It's going to get a lot worse, and we have to start thinking about how we're going to help the people who are on the streets and how every community, now, hear me, every community has to do their part, but every community has a right to information. Every community has a right to know exactly what is going on, and that is why I wanted to come here tonight to have that direct discussion.
Personally, I've met a couple of homeless people, and they're from out in New Jersey somewhere else, so I hope that...
Let me tell you, you have met homeless people from New Jersey, you've probably met homeless people from Florida or Washington, but I will tell you, you've also met homeless people from this community and every community around the city.
How many other states have the same problem as we do? How many other states have the same problem?
A lot, actually.
We need that audited as well.
I'm just being honest with you.
Okay, well, all right. And then every homeless shelter that's been open in the past three years was under an emergency procurement. By making such a declaration, the mayor is bypassing the urinal process and any form of contract bidding. This is clearly an abuse of a procurement process. Would you say this is illegal? And would you, what could you do to stop this?
Every...
Process. Would you say this is illegal? And would you, what could you do to stop this?
Every, every administration, mayor, controller, have always had, given the crisis, an emergency declaration out there. Because when the system spikes, as it has, without an emergency deck, we would not be able to move quickly to help people on the street. And that is a tool that, if not abused, has helped a lot. That's how we get kids off the streets, that's how people don't die. You are correct, which I think you're getting at, which is, if we only use emergency deck as an excuse not to be transparent to the community, well, that is wrong, and that is why we need to invite and listen to communities. I have, listen, in my years in government, working as a borough president and as controller, I have gone to community organizations that were grappling with the issue of whether it's a major 40-story development or a homeless shelter in the community. And I've walked in to some of the most hostile questions you can imagine, but that's my job, and it's okay. You shouldn't be afraid of the hostile question. What you're then supposed to do is, after you have a meeting like this, is get to a table, start working on the issues, start thinking about security, if that's what you're concerned about, making sure that we know where the schools are and where the kids are. We have to prove that the provider is a good actor, not a slum lord, and that is how we have done this, and I've done this in my career. I could take you to communities that have shelters, you wouldn't even know the difference and where they are, because they were fully integrated, because the community ended up being part of the process. The community ended up adopting the shelter. Now, sometimes you come up with a proposal for a shelter, and it's just not going to work. It's just not writing in this community. Not because the community says, I don't want it, because it just doesn't work, the traffic, the way it doesn't work. So you have to have the conviction, and you have to be confident that you could pull it back as well. And sometimes you have to lean in and say, we have to do this. Maybe not forever, but we have a spike. The way this works is you have to communicate with the community. I'm here because no one's talking to you. People are talking at you, and you shouldn't be demonized because you have legitimate issues. And if I fundamentally disagree with something someone says tonight, like the comment about New Jersey, then you got to respect my opinion based on what I've seen too, because it's the only way we're going to deal with these issues.
When it comes to spending associated with the homeless issue, as well as in particular homeless shelters, Mayor de Blasio's policy is horrible, specifically his lack of policy, appears to spend, continues to spend, good money after bad. What can be done to stop this flow of money into pointless items like sheltering people in hotels when the Department of Social Services has no limit to their budget and can continue to spend our tax money in wasteful ways? And putting people in temporary quarters or hotel rooms is not a permanent solution, and in my mind, a total waste of our taxpayer money.
I am, I am not happy putting people in these hotels or in these cluster sites and then paying these landlords $5,000, $6,000 a month. I mean, you could rent a room a month at the Waldorf, right? Or the Plaza for this money. But this has been going on for a long time, and I think we have to fundamentally change the way we help our people. And the truth is, we haven't had a new thought, a new idea about how we deal with the crisis, but it starts with the fact that, one, 30 to 40% of the people in shelter, if we had a proper affordable housing plan, they could be moved from shelter to apartments, but we never talk about that. I want to hear a timeline that says, we're going to create X thousand low-income permanent housing units to be used to move people from shelter to apartments. Some people may say, well, I don't want, you know, a low income, but we'll fight that dimension, people object to that, but at the end of the day, we need to get people permanent housing because they have a job, they shouldn't be there, but there's nowhere to go. So we have to have a discussion about the kind of housing we're going to help create. You know, LaGuardia, when he was mayor, right? After the Depression, 1938, created the New York City Public Housing Authority before we had disinvestment, and it helped a lot of people. In fact, public housing was considered the gateway to the middle class because once you had a roof over your head, you could have a small job that turned into something really big. We have to start thinking about the solution on the back end as well. And that is what I think the frustration is, when people say, well, what's going to happen? 60,000 goes to 65,000 goes to 70,000. Okay, how many shelters are we going to build around the city? We have to have a plan to reduce the shelter population, which would reduce shelters, and then come up with an affordable housing plan that works for the city.
Before I introduce some people to you tonight, Mr. Controller, I wanted to ask one question with respect to our particular center. Akasia Network is listed on your paycheck site as one of the top five prime vendors, actually, it's the top one, with over 354 million dollars worth of contracts with the city. And as I've gone through it very briefly today, I've noticed that there's been a lot of adjustments to those contracts over the period. So for instance, just this September, there was a $44 million contract with a provider with a number later that had an $8 million interest. And you've paid out 29 million, it was originally 33 million, now it's up to 41. We don't know what it's for, but how is that that you can just up it by $8 million with a top provider? Are there actually bids that come in for these things? And also, Akasia Network is related to Sarah's security. I'd like to know what you're doing about investigating those connections from a nonprofit like Akasia, who then filters the money through at a very high rate to a for-profit security company that they happen to also have connections with in ownership. How do you handle that?
So I didn't pull the Akasia file, I didn't bring it with me, but I'd be happy to take you through a lot of those contract increases and why, and a whole host of things. I can't tell you this, our deputy controller for contract has, with her staff, has walked up and down the Akasia contracts, oversight, questions, looking at it. I feel very secure in the knowledge that that contract has been properly reviewed. But again, if you have questions, if you disagree with what I'm saying tonight, and you want to submit questions to our office, if you want to come in and meet, then let's talk about it. And maybe you'll point out something I should look at. And by the way, a lot of the audit ideas I get, believe it or not, they don't only come from me. They come from going to community meetings, listening to people, listening to people cheer, sometimes people boo, but I walk out saying, you know what, that lady in the third row, she raised something, we're not on this, go check it out, and I'll call you back. So if you want to leave your number, I'll call you, but if you want to call me, you can do that tomorrow.
I would love to do that as a background, as an attorney and a resident of Massbeth all my life, I would absolutely love to do that.
You don't even have to live in Massbeth or be an attorney, you just call me and I'll answer the question.
I'd also like to introduce a family that was brought tonight and invited Danielle and Alan Diaz and their sons Julian and Mason, who are joining us tonight. They actually live in a shelter. And I think I'd like to thank you for some of the things that have been going on in the shelter system that they've experienced, and I'd like to hear it, Control.
Hello, little boys. Congratulations. I got one just like you.
My name is Julian Diaz.
What's the question? What can you tell us?
Well, I just wanted to express how the shelter system is, and it's very, very unfair for myself, for my wife, and my kids. The fact that we have a curfew is very hard for me to work and provide for them. The neighborhood that the shelter we're currently in, 51 Junior Street in Brooklyn, New York, the shelter system's really not helping us at all, and it's terrible. We were recently at one in the Bed-Stuy area, and since our four-year-old, excuse me, I'm happy. Our four-year-old started school back in September, just started pre-k, and on 145th Street and Amsterdam Avenue in Manhattan. So the shelter we were in on Myrtle Avenue in the Bed-Stuy area told us that since he started school, we would need to provide a ladder, stating that he's in school now so he could get a tractor to a closer shelter in Manhattan. The case working there wasn't helpful at all. I mean, let me now, let me just mention, we moved in there in February and stayed there up until last month, and we didn't have any hot water at all in our bathtub. We had mice in the unit, we had mouse droppings everywhere, all over the kitchen area. We had, we even found a mouse crawling in the middle of the night, tried to crawl inside the playroom where the baby slept.
Not also that, but we didn't have any privacy. One day during the summertime, I woke up and I was pregnant, and when I went to the bathroom, you know, as a pregnant woman, you're here in 50, 20 minutes, I saw a guy in my dining room table just sitting there, and when I ate a potion, I said... And when I approached him, I said, "What are you doing here?" He said, "I'm a janitor." So, I went and I spoke to the supervisor for the shelter, and she said, "That's his job to be in there." I don't think it's any job, any kind of job to, you know. It's ridiculous. We called the HHS and 311 for help, and nobody's helping us.
Okay, wait, let me do this. Tomorrow, we will, I will give you my number, my direct number, and we will resolve every one of your issues. We will call the commission, and we will solve your issue, okay? I want you to know that. And I also want to say, it is not easy to come before strangers and talk about something so personal with your children. So, God bless you.
All right, thank you, Controller. Have we got one other question? All right, one other question, and then that's it.
All right, so make it a good one.
Hi, I hope it's good. There are almost 180,000 public housing units in the city of New York. I read in the New York paper, I think it was Cranes, that 22,000 NCHA apartments are uninhabited.
How many?
22,000, because they are in disrepair. Number one is that 22,000 apartments, correct? And then, number two, does NCHA have the funds to fix those apartments, which is where you can house the homeless people?
Okay, so, you know where you got that data?
Yeah.
From my audit.
Okay.
So, let me tell you what the audit said. The audit said 2,000, it's more like 2200. But that is still, that's not 22,000. It's 2200. But by the way, there shouldn't be one vacancy in a NCHA development, right? Not one, right? Some of those units have been vacant for five to 10 years. It's outrageous, because think about that. Think about that. If you added 1,000, 1,500, 1,800 people with families, that's thousands of people who could move out of shelter tomorrow. And I have demanded that they make those repairs. Now, I like your question, because you're also asking me, "So, what's the solution?", as it relates to... Well, let me say, there has been a federal disinvestment of public housing. There's been a state investment. But I want to leave you with something, because I'd like you to help me with this. One of the things, everybody knows that Battery Park City is in Manhattan, right? Down, down, down. That development project throws off a tremendous amount of money, hundreds of millions of dollars, that traditionally has gone to housing programs with HPD in the city. We've had a proposal that said, "Why don't we take some of that money and move it to make those repairs at NCHA so that we can repair the apartments, make the repairs, so the whole housing system doesn't collapse?" And if we put $40 million a year for 10 years, knowing it was going to go to help the people who are struggling the most, who would object? So, how do we get this done? It takes three people to get it done. It takes the city controller who sits on the board. It was my idea, so I said yes. It takes Governor Cuomo, because he's on the board. He says he'd vote yes. We got to ask Mayor de Blasio to take this money and say yes, and then we could move hundreds of millions of dollars to the people who are struggling and are one step away from being homeless. Let me say this, I'm very glad I came tonight. I'm glad that we were able to talk.
Mrs. Strayner. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I was invited out here by the Juniper Park Association, and I thank you for coming out here. We braved this rain to come out here to hear what you had to say about the shelters and hotels. Now, if you look around this room, many of us bought our homes, and we bought it to the American dream. I was honored to have you ask a question. Now, this is what we get from a collective.
What's the question?
The question is, since no one can stop these homeless shelters or these hotels from being built, is there a provision, maybe, that you can protect us, our quality of our home, so they will not diminish in value?
No.
Well, is there anything that can be done? Because when they come in, from my understanding, when a shelter comes into the community, our value drops at least 20%. See, this is what I'm talking about. See, the community comes out, we're concerned.
Ted, 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 please don't go near me. Ted, Ted, you have a long agenda tonight, you have a candidate.
I understand.
Come here tonight. This is my last question. I want to say thank you to the community for inviting me. What'd you say?
No, 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 don't yell out. Don't yell out, you have a board. Go ahead, I'm sorry. No, 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 no more questions. You can't answer.
We were doing so well.
Yes, I'm sorry.
You should have. For those of you, I want to say thank you for inviting me. I look forward to working with you on some of these issues, and I thank you very much.
Thank you very much.